Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. I would like to welcome the members of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, staff, the community, and our guest presenters to the Board of Education's Public Work Session. Everyone is participating in this meeting utilizing a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meetings. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives, and the need to safeguard the health of the community, it's necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or an electronic device. Today's Public Work Session will be recorded and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on the WCPS website. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us and this information will then be distributed to Board members and the Superintendent. At this time, I call to order the Public Work Session of the Washington County Board of Education. I'm requesting all Board members to identify themselves in alphabetical order so that we may determine if there is a quorum of Board members present. Mr. Bickford, would you begin?
Yes, Mr. Bickford is here.
Mrs. Fisher is here.
Michael Guestford is here.
Lynda Murray is here.
Mr. Reidauer, are you here? Mr. Stauffer?
Mr. Stauffer here.
Mr. Mackley, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Let's try Mr. Reidauer again. Mr. Reidauer, are you here? All right, we have six Board members present and our student representative.
This is my apologies, I'm here.
Thank you. So we have all seven Board members present and our student representative, so I declare that there is a quorum. This is a work session and as such, there will be no votes or formal action taken. The purpose of today's work session is to receive information and to discuss and ask questions about that information. By way of background, at last October's Maryland Association of Boards of Education's annual conference, I chose to attend a workshop that I thought would be helpful to me in knowing what we as a Board could do to better address concerns from our stakeholders and community regarding such matters as bullying, lack of respect, lack of civility, inclusiveness, and equity, to name but a few. Following the workshop presentation, I spoke with the presenters to ask if they would consider coming to Washington County to share the work that they had done. And so here we are today. I thank Dr. Pugh and Dr. Bishop for their work in arranging for today's presentation. And at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Bishop to introduce our guest presenters.
Thank you, President Williams. Good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure today to introduce our colleagues from Anarundel County. We have with us presenting Dr. Maureen McMahon, who's Deputy Superintendent for Academics and Strategic Initiatives; Ms. Mary Tyler, who's Assistant Superintendent for Advanced Studies and Programs; and Dr. Shannon Pugh, who's Manager of Assessments. So thank you for being with us virtually from Anarundel and we look forward to hearing more about your Global Community Citizenship Course. I now hand it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and thank you, all of you in Washington County, all of our colleagues there for inviting us. We're going to take an overview trip through our Global Community Citizenship Course and the journey we took to get there. And then we think we'll let you dive into some questions that interest you most at the end. So at any time.
I've lost sound. For Maureen.
There you go. I need to speak out loud. Good.
I think it's a technical problem she's having.
Let me see. Got sound issues? Can't...
Reaching for you.
Now he can hear me? Okay. I apologize. So let me start again. Let me tell you that in Anarundel County, in 2017, we had a high school, old high schools at the time, had a pretty serious racial incident. And because the community is very... And... Band-aid on it. They really wanted to talk about what it means to be...
This is Peter. I'm still having issues hearing her. Maureen, you're going in and out. If it falls in.
Dr. McMahon, do you want me to go ahead and start on my part?
I think that's a good idea, Shannon.
All right. So just to jump in where Dr. McMahon was leaving off, and I know Mary Tular is going to jump into our target threads, but because of an incident that happened in one of our schools, we as a county decided to be very proactive of how we were going to address the building of community, the building of a certain skill set for our students. So Ms. Tular, if you wanted to go ahead and talk about our target threads.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. As Shannon and Dr. McMahon attempted to share, that once our county recognized the role GCC, which is what we call our Global Community Citizenship Class, in building community membership with action and skill development, we immediately initiated high school meetings with both school and community stakeholders at Anarundel High School. And Anarundel High School is the high school that had the incident. The events afforded firsthand testimony, classroom visitations, and an examination of the meaningful content explored in the course. We stressed that building of awareness while supporting students in their understanding of perspective. Students could begin to appreciate differences while recognizing and valuing the things that they actually had in common. GCC builds connection with acceptance, inclusion, and empathy. In GCC, voice matters and students feel both capable and contributing. GCC supports development, the development of both independent thinking and change-making. At its core is our 21st century skill. We are actually building 21st century skills in the area of communication, collaboration, problem-solving, analytical and creative thinking, ethics, action and accountability, and media literacy. As you can see on the thread slide, in GCC, course lessons explicitly teach active listening and civil discourse skills as students are coming together as a community to learn about citizenship in and outside of their schoolhouse as they take on the role as both a learner and a leader. Through GCC, students identify and discuss issues and events through essential questions. The result is a demonstration of a community of civility. We actually embraced the concept of social justice in GCC and were emphasizing and have emphasized students exploring cultural and technological influences through real-world problem-based learning challenges. Shannon?
So as we built the GCC curriculum for the district, we of course started with the foundational work that happened at one of our high schools. But as we really looked at it, this became our opportunity to really stress some communication skills that I think in every district, we would all recognize that our students, all of our students, need some support. And so our curriculum is really, the foundation of it, really is based upon those skill developments. So we took advantage of the Common Core speaking and listening skills, those standards, that's the foundation of our course, as well as some writing, literacy, and mathematics. So skill standards are the foundation of the course. And then we add in content standards specifically from Teaching Tolerance Social Justice Standards that we'll talk a little bit about in just a moment. Also, making some connections to National Council for Social Studies C3 standards, as well as our National Fine Arts Standards. And I'll talk about why Fine Arts Standards are important for us here in Anarundel County, but it may or may not be important for any other district that wanted to take on this task or to build on the work that we have done. So as you can see on the left, this is how our curriculum is set up. So everything is based upon a skill standard first, and then we build in the content standards to support that development of skill. When our students leave this class, they really do have a lot of opportunities to practice active listening, to practice speaking, to practice delivering and presenting information. A matter of fact, that's how our students are actually graded in this course. They are not graded really on this content standards, they're graded on their ability to communicate with each other using some respective protocols that I'll talk about in just a second. So our curriculum is skill standards-driven. The next thing I wanted to share with you is there is a lot of really powerful work that has been done nationwide regarding civil discourse, regarding social justice, regarding speaking and listening skills, issues about how do we talk about race? How do we talk to each other about issues that may make some people feel uncomfortable? A lot of this work has been done. And so as we worked on developing the curriculum, it wasn't so much that we were writing our own curriculum, as we were knowing what we were looking for, knowing the foundation of our skills as the lead there, and then really curating a lot of very powerful work that has already been done in these categories. So the New York Times is a great series of lessons for young people about difficult conversations. The museum has amazing resources, National Council for Social Studies, the Anti-Defamation League, and Facing History in Ourselves, all of that. And of course, probably the most powerful work that is out there in the category specifically related to social justice is what is available through Teaching Tolerance. Almost everything on your screen that you see right now is free and available to any educator in the United States. If you want me to delve into a little bit more about what some of these resources are and the question and answer section of our presentation, I would love that opportunity. But I really want to stress is that this can be a lot of work in developing curriculum or we can take advantage of the really great resources that are already out there. So now that we had our standards and then our resources, we really thought about how, what is the how as far as the pedagogy related to this course, as far as delivering this to our students that's really engaging? One thing to know about the GCC course in Anarundel County is it is truly inclusive. And so there isn't a track for students in an honors class or an AP class, or even students who receive specialized instruction, our English language learners. All of our students are together as freshmen. This is a ninth grade course required for all freshmen. They are in a classroom together and in many cases, they are meeting with other students that they just don't know, that they haven't had that opportunity to be with. And so they're forming that concept of community, they're forming that concept of here we are at our school together, and they may or may not see each other in other classes throughout their high school career. But this is a great opportunity for our students to really get to know each other and understand the diversity within a school, the diversity of thoughts in addition to experiences. So two of the, two of the things that we really do value in Anarundel County is our relationship with the Avid program. We have a district-wide license using Avid. We're not sure if Washington County has the same structure, but all of our schools have Avid resources. And we really focused a lot on the pedagogy behind our Avid program. For example, one of the things that we stress with all of our students, they all have notebooks with the Avid academic script built into those, and those are sentence starters. There's ways to help students talk about things. For example, one of the sentence starters is, "Well, I might not agree with what you said, and this is why." And so really giving them some language that we know that our young people need in order to have rich conversations and dialogue with each other. So we put a lot within our Avid program, our resources and supports through our Avid program. Earlier, I said we also relied heavily on the National Fine Arts Standards, and that's because in Anarundel County, we do a lot of work with Artful Thinking, which of course is out of Harvard University's Project Zero. Artful Thinking is about being able to talk about and think about images. And once again, when we're dealing with such diverse classrooms and so many different skill levels, almost every child can communicate or articulate about an image. And so we really rely on those strategies that we use throughout the course. This is really our pedagogy. So we have our standards, which are skill-based, with some supports of content. We have our resources that are really available in there, and then we have these two driving courses in pedagogy. And once again, if anybody wants to talk more about these in any more detail, we can do that during the question and answer period.
With the completion of a fabulous skill and standard-oriented curriculum that recognized both the teacher and the student and their choice in the learning process, we knew we had the responsibility to really support our identified teachers in each of the high schools to feel comfortable in this journey, confident in the material, and really recognizing the power behind the intentionality of this course in their own schools. The result was the creation of immersive activities, expert workshops, and system-thinking exercises where the curriculum and its content came alive. It's important to note that the professional learning explorations were purposeful throughout the onboarding junction, and at all points, or whenever we could, we actually modeled the Avid and the Artful Thinking strategy so that the teachers were actually immersed in what they would be doing with their children. The other thing that we did was we introduced our educators to county leaders because this was an Anarundel County public school recognition of a ninth grade course that every child needed to take to build their skill set to be successful in high school and beyond. The results of the professional learning or onboarding experience was over 36 hours of contact time. And Shannon and I can both tell you that the teachers that came in a little apprehensive and fearful, left as a solid team. They were a network excited to take on this journey and be a trailblazer of social justice in our communities. Different topics that we actually explored are posted on the slide. They included equity and equity of voice, communication both with the act of listening and the civil discourse. We really focused on dialogue and using Avid as a strategy to facilitate that dialogue, conflict management. We built relationships among the teachers because we wanted that to be happening in the classroom itself. So we utilized True Colors as a personality assessment, so strengths could be the lead as they were facilitating learning. We looked at implicit bias. We also talked about how this had to be a risk-free environment, kids needed to see themselves as a member. So GCC 101 was discussed, as well as creating an amazing learning environment. We talked about project-based learning and also using performance-based assessments and rubrics.
So our course structure is, so this is taught in a one semester course. We in Anarundel County are on A-Day, B-Day, so about 80 minutes every other day for our students. And so within those two marking periods, we have two modules per marking period, so for a total of four modules. So the modules are really focused on, as I mentioned earlier, the skills, really focused on civility and respect, active listening and civil discourse. Each module is built around essential questions, and each module ends with some type of summative task. So along the way, students start off by learning about community, the idea of who is in my community. Then they learn about who they are as people and how they relate to those around us. And then we get into more conversations about other parts of what it means to be a community. And so those are all based upon four modules. And at the very end, the last two modules that our students engage with is to look at data related to, in our case, for Anarundel County for the most part, and they have to come up with some issue or idea that they want to try to address and make better because ultimately this course is about understanding that we're all part of a big community and that we need to all work together to try to solve problems, right? And so one of those things at the very end is they have to identify an issue and then they have to pitch an idea of how to be an upstander, of how we might be able to address some issues in my community. Some of the things that students chose to look at were things like food deserts, or transportation, or daycare issues. So those are some of the things that our kids really dove into and even explored opportunities with members of our larger community. Some were, you know, calling experts in other parts of the country to help them with their brainstorming and their projects. So if anybody wants to talk more about those, I'd love to. It's very, very exciting what some of our students are able to do, even here at the end in our online environment, of how our students are truly engaged. And so each module's about 11 days. I'm going to be honest with you, is that we have a lot in each module, so there is a lot of choice, both on the part of our teachers and the part of our students, as far as which activities they want to delve into. But the summative tasks I mentioned, we have four of them and they are required throughout the district. We also really stress the importance of bringing community members into our classrooms, whether they are in person or in this type of system where we can do things that's more digital, the opportunity to go on field trips, the opportunity to really understand things that are happening within their community, and once again, to build those relationships with each other and their classrooms because it's really hard to be disrespectful to people that you know. And so just building that relationship piece within those freshman classrooms in our high school, we just thought was so incredibly important. And we think that this course structure and the four modules that we have are really helping promote that sense of community and belonging that we have.
As you can see, the embrace of GCC or our Global Community Citizenship Class was not overnight. After the community incident in the Anarundel Theater, intentional activities occurred with a pilot that lasted actually four semesters. So we affected over 2,000 children prior to making it a graduation requirement. With the graduation requirement, a district perspective on the four modules occurred within the curriculum. This included, or we integrated Passion Days because we recognized students at each of the different schools had their own community that they needed to embrace and our communities are unique. They also incorporated signature connections. Each of our high schools have a workforce signature program, part of our college and career readiness platform. Last spring and summer, onboarding occurred, as I said before, that really resulted in a core of amazing educators, truly dedicated to the course and the course content. I also need to say our school leaders reinforced the course and empowered their teachers to really authenticate the learning 100% behind us. And Shannon and I and two other critical members of academics continue to work with the schools as coaches. This past fall, our .5 credit course was launched and launched very successfully even as we moved to an online platform with COVID. It is important to note that the course has no finish lines. We are continuing to evolve it. The voices of our students and our teachers continue to inform us in terms of what is applicable or what might need to be changed or additional choices to be put into the curriculum. Also, we're trying to, whenever possible, apply the learning to world circumstances. A lot of that is right before us right now. And we absolutely celebrate our students' change-making efforts. They are truly community stewards and they are on a mission to make this world a better place. And we really do believe the GCC course had a lot to do with that. Maureen?
Well, let me try again. Thumbs up or thumbs down, Shannon? Here we go. So certainly testimonials are something that can be impressive, but for us, what we were using the testimonials for is, it was, these were exit documents out of the actual semesters to try to figure out, where did we hit the sweet spot? How are teachers and how are parents and how are students actually feeling? And you can read these here. The bottom line is, the students felt empowered. And they also felt, many of the students said to us, it was the first time they ever had friends in school. I mean, things that we weren't expecting. I never ever spoke to the people I was in elementary school and middle school with that ended up in this class with me. I never had spoken to them before. And that's really powerful because what it did is it said to these students, "We can be a community, we can pull down these walls." Now, the teachers that, of course, as Mary said, they were volunteers. We wanted teachers that had the ability to have courageous conversations with children. But these teachers grew far more than they ever believed. Their comment was, "This was the best professional journey of my life. I use these skills every day, and from this point forward, I will be a different teacher because of this course." So we gained so much as a district because of this course, not only for our students but for our teachers. So at this point in time, Shannon, I know you're going to put up the last slide, which is just a thank you, and it has our emails on it, but we'd love to entertain questions that you may have, and feel free to ask us anything. I will tell you honestly, the journey wasn't all roses, right? There were points in this journey when our superintendent, really, his courage was really leading the way in this because it was some tough times along the way. Because when you talk about mandating a course for all students in a district, that isn't small. And so we have many, many stories. It ended up in a really good space, but along the way, there were ups and downs. So if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We also would tell you that this GCC website, that the URL is up on your screen right now, that's a website where you can get the journey and look a little bit more deeply at things that we talked about today. So with that, I don't know, Dr. Bishop, if there were any questions that you knew about ahead of time, then maybe we could answer, or?
No, I'll just open it up to the floor.
This is Melissa Williams, and I would like to not only encourage my colleagues to ask questions, but I know we have principals present and other staff members, so should they have questions, I would encourage them. And I see Dr. Kohanik has his hand up.
Hi, I want to thank you for the presentation. I was just curious, I know you spoke about the curriculum and the content, and I did appreciate on the guest speakers, how did you bring the community into the development of the curriculum and content? I'm just curious on how you actually infused them in that process so they better understood what was being taught in the classes.
So that's a good question, and there were a couple different ways we did that. One of the ways was during the professional development opportunities with teachers, we had panel experts that we brought in from community organizations, from longstanding communities throughout the district, from the NAACP, the faith-based communities, the historical unofficial leaders in the communities, and we would bring them in as part of the presentation with the teachers, but allow a lot of interaction. And then finally, Mary and Shannon actually convened a Global Citizen Advisory Committee with respect to this course. And Shannon, Mary, you want to talk a little bit about that because it has a plethora of diversity on this community advisory committee.
Shannon, do you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So after launching the course in the fall, what we did was we looked at our community stakeholders across a multitude of fields and expertise. It included our police department, our community college, our developmental center to ensure that we were representing students with disabilities. We also looked at our local management board with regard to adult-based services. Again, a plethora of different individuals that would be able to be stakeholders, our growing kindness campaign leaders in our community is another example. We brought them in to really be our advisors. We gave them a firsthand experience through a walking tour of the materials of the curriculum and the exercises, but we also invited them to see it firsthand. We actually did a tour, visiting all the different sites in our community with regard to the implementation of GCC so that they could actually be with students as they engaged in some of their content explorations. The feedback was incredible. They actually got to see the teachers that felt so comfortable in this journey that they owned it. They were ensuring students had regular voices throughout the course dialogue and discussions, and then those that were still growing and working. and then those that were still growing and working with the curriculum content with their peers, their peers in the building, and their peers across the county. Because as I stated earlier, we had a network. These were GCC amazing educators that came together and saw themselves as, as a troop or a core beyond their own walls, so that they could further influence what was happening within the classroom setting. So that GCC advisory members have been instrumental, and continue to be instrumental in terms of how we're evolving this course. They also want to use it in their own businesses. Shannon and I had the opportunity to actually be with one of our GCC advisors, who's a professor at the community college, and he also wants to take a stance. How does he lead in his own higher education environment, the recognition of diversity, and having the professors understand inclusivity and acceptance, and utilizing empathetic teaching as part of their content exploration? So it's exciting to see it's their advisory for us, so that we better our craft in the presentation of this course, but then they are also taking it out and becoming our champions as an Anaronda County totality of community.
Mrs. Fisher, I see your hand.
I'm just curious, over the years, there have been so many additional requirements added to graduation. Did adding this course cause a problem with students being able to take the, all the courses that they really wanted to take?
So that's a great question. In fact, it's a question that came from many parent stakeholders. We have 26 credits required in Anaronda County public schools for graduation, and eight and a half of those are elective credits. And so this course, when our superintendent went before the board to say he would really like this to be a graduation requirement, that was in place of one half, a half credit, right? So instead of now eight courses that the students are choosing from in high school, instead of eight and a half credits that they get to choose from, now they have a choice of eight credits, because this one's been chosen for them. During this journey, what I'll say to you is, in the pilot phase of this course, what the leaders in the district realized was that this course provides a foundation for the students to learn who one another is, to actually come to learn about this trust, respect, growth culture that is missing in some schools, missing in some households, missing in some communities, that they really started to learn that that is a process. And once we watched three semesters of this course be piloted at Arundel High School, there was no going back. You felt so, so staunchly that it was fundamental to undergird everything that that would happen then in high school. And in fact, it has proven to be quite, quite an amazing foundational element for the students who now 5,000 strong went through it this year. And the other night, I'll just tell you a short story. The other night, there was a student-led justice forum, Justice for All forum. And many of the students spoke about their time in this course as being fundamental to them being able to be articulate about issues and advocacy, advocacy issues that they're now part of as young adults. So it was, it was a, it, it was something that came up, and we systematically moved through it little by little.
Maureen, as you heard the other night, even students that were our first enrollees in this course at Arundel are now taking the platform to make a difference. They see themselves as leaders, positive leaders to facilitate change. They also see themselves as potential leaders in their school community, and our recognition of our craft or our, our team, our team work groups on behalf of the school system.
So then, do you have a number of courses, especially electives, that are half-credit, and just half a year long?
Yes, we have many electives that are half-credit, and now some electives that are quarter-credit. So students can take up to eight credits free of their, from their choice of electives over the four years.
That's very different, very different from our setup. Okay, well, thank you for your information.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I would kind of like to follow with Mrs. Fisher's questioning. Do, is physical education and health, are they half-credit courses there?
Yes, they are half-credit courses.
Thank you.
Could this speaker please identify himself?
Oh, hi. Yeah, this is Rick Akers.
Thank you, Rick. I didn't recognize your voice. Are there any other questions? Mr. Mackley, not to put you on the spot, but as a student, what thoughts do you have regarding this?
Well, I think a course like this, I would certainly think would be very good for all the students in our counties. And I would fully support it, as long as we can, I mean, I know a lot of the details would have had to be fixed with getting it. We're basically not interrupting a student's registration for other courses. But I think the, a lot of the principles that you guys discussed that were taught in this class would be like game-changing for the students of our county. Because we have, every school district has an incredibly diverse student population. But I think, I think that a lot of the principles you guys discussed would be super important for the students of our county to be able to understand and apply to their lives.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Mackley. Mrs. Fisher, do you have your hand up again, or is it just still up?
I'm sorry, I forgot to put it down.
That's okay. I just thought you had a follow-up question or two. Are there any other questions? How practice wait time?
I know while you're waiting, Ms. Williams, I did want to say to you that if, if, when the fall comes and we're back to school face-to-face, or if we're still in the virtual or some combination, we'd be happy if you'd like to see any of these courses in action in either modality. Be happy to invite you to come along and engage with the students and actually see it in action. We'd also be able to talk with you about any resources or any parts of the journey. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel if you, if you actually decide to make any decision based on what we shared, shared with you today, and have more questions or more desire to see some of the work we've done, happy to share.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. I appreciate that very much. So I'm not seeing any other hands. So if there are no further questions, Dr. Michael, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
Certainly thank our presenters that shared with us. We are familiar with Avid. A matter of fact, quite a few of the principals that are on the call right now have Avid at their school, or have worked in schools that have Avid. We don't have it system-wide, and we have benefited from that, where people have bought in, in its entirety. So again, I just appreciate your time and your presentation, and it's certainly something worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. McMahon, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Tiller, thank you so very much for your time and your willingness to present this information to us. And thank you again for the invitation to visit once things get back to what they hope, what we hope they'll be again.
Surely. Thank you for your time today. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. So colleagues, colleagues, before we adjourn the work session, is there anything else? Comments, questions, anything for the good of the order?
This is Peter. I have a question just about scheduling. I know we had talked about, I think on the schedule, we're meeting next at 3:30, or was that moved up to three?
My understanding is our closed session begins at 3:30. We have a, we have an agenda planning committee meeting at 3 o'clock, some of us.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Hey, thank you, colleagues, and thank you all staff members who joined us this afternoon. And with that, we'll adjourn the work session. Thank you.